Evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to allow folks to get in the meeting for a few minutes, so we'll be starting momentarily. Give it just one more moment. Think we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining tonight's virtual public hearing. My name is Cherie Gibson, and I work with HNTB, and we're supporting M Law with tonight's public hearing. The purpose of our hearing tonight is to provide information and answer questions on two matters. The first is a proposed amendment to Part 10, Section 10.3 of the MOI regulations governing administrative fees on the Dulles Toll Road. The second is a proposed amendment to the regulation that establishes toll rates for use of the road. We will have an in-person public hearing on Monday, next Monday, at the Washington Dulles Airport Marriott, and we will be providing ways for you to comment throughout the presentation. Next slide. So for attendees, a few housekeeping items that we want to go over before we get into the presentation. This is a virtual hearing, and it will be in listen and view only. So this is a Zoom webinar mode. For attendees, mics and video will not be enabled. You'll be able to see the panelists. Our hearing is being recorded, and a copy of the recording will be posted on M Law's website within a few days. So attendees can ask questions using the Q and A function at any time during the hearing. However, we really strongly encourage for official comments to be sent to us through the official means of providing comments so that they can be included in the record. But if you do want to ask a question, you can use the Q and A function. To the extent possible, questions will be answered live. We also will have some time to review the questions and provide answers to those later on the website. Next slide. So moving forward, we're going to divide tonight's hearing into two sections. The first section is the discussion of the proposed amendment to regulations governing the Dulles Toll Road to authorize collection of administrative fees to recover costs incurred by by the airports authority to invoice toll road customers who use the pay-by-plate, which is license plate imaging. And so we're going to have two speakers for this part, Richard Galanaski and John Aspira. And they will each divide this section of the presentation, so I'm going to invite Richard to go ahead and get us started.
Very good. Thank you, Cherie, and welcome to those joining us today for this briefing. As Cherie mentioned, my name is Richard Galanaski. I'm the Vice President and Airport Manager of Washington Dulles International Airport. In addition to the airport proper, my responsibility also includes the operation and maintenance of the Dulles Toll Road and the Dulles Airport access highway, both of those roads collectively known as the Dulles Quarter. I'll start today briefing, I'll start today's event with a briefing on our plan conversion to all electronic tolling for the toll road, addressing these five items, including the way we are set up today with our toll plazas, what our toll transaction trends have been over the past several years, what options we have for all electronic tolling, what the cash options are for those who choose to use EZ Pass without a credit card. And finally, I'll summarize where we're going with our pay-by-plate option. Next, please. So first, just to orient everybody on the toll road and how it's set up. We are a 14-mile-long toll road with 112 lane miles that connect the Capitol Beltway with Loudoun County. We have 11 toll plazas eastbound with 16 EZ Pass dedicated lanes and 14 EZ Pass and coin lanes today. We have 10 toll plazas heading westbound with 17 EZ Pass dedicated lanes and 12 EZ Pass and coin-accepted lanes today as well. All told, we have 59 toll lanes at 17, I'm sorry, at 21 different locations. Next, please. Just to give you an idea of our trends regarding electronic tolling, you can see over the past three to four years, we have actually been increasing the number of all-electronic tolls from 91% in 2019 up to 95% now in 2022. So our transition to all-electronic tolling is essentially all complete, except for this last few percentage points of our customers. The final step in the conversion to all-electronic tolling will enable the remainder of those users, the ones who are using cash and coin options today, to transition to an EZ Pass or a pay-by-plate option, and will ultimately speed their way through the Dulles Toll Road plazas. Next, please. So when I talk about all-electronic tolling options, I want to be very clear that we have three separate options for our customers. Number one is EZ Pass, obviously the most predominant form of payment on our toll road, as it is on many of the other toll roads in the region. The other is a mobile app, which you can download yourself on your smartphone and register the vehicle that you drive through the toll plazas. And what happens in that case is a picture is taken of your license plate. It's linked to the mobile app, and then you are charged through the mobile app provider. Each one of those mobile apps has their own administrative fee that they charge you for using their app. And we have five different apps that are accepted in Virginia on Virginia toll roads, including EZ Tolls Virginia, GoToll, Slora, Uproad, and PZ Drive, and those are all available on the App Store. And in addition, we are adding the pay-by-plate option, starting in January of 2023. And in this option, we would be taking a picture of your license plate and setting up a virtual account for your car and bill you at the end of every month for all the transactions, all the times that you went through a toll road or a toll plaza. And each one of those transactions will be charged $1.60 administrative fee to your account. Next, please. One of the questions that has come up is what if you want to use EZ Pass, but you don't want to commit a credit card to the EZ Pass account through EZ Pass Virginia? There are ways to use all cash and to purchase your EZ Pass at a Giant Food or Wegmans Food Store, a AAA office location, or the various commuter centers located in the Northern Virginia area. Then, once you have that EZ Pass paid for with cash, you can replenish those EZ Pass with cash at two DMV customer service centers in the Northern Virginia area, one in Chantilly and one in Woodbridge. What's interesting about this, these are at DMV customer service centers, but you don't have to go through the normal DMV customer process. They are dedicated customer service agents specifically there for EZ Pass service. In addition, there's another option that EZ Pass Virginia has set up, where you can purchase a reload card with cash at either a 7-Eleven or CVS locally, and that card will be linked to your EZ Pass transponder. And that way, you can pay for cash, link your, the card is linked, you send in the, or you call the EZ Pass office, and you give them that number, and then your card is automatically replenished. For those of you not in Virginia that want to use EZ Pass, you can also get EZ Pass in Maryland that works on our toll road, as well as all the Virginia's toll plazas at the Motor Vehicle Administration offices in Maryland. Next, please. So in summary, our pay-by-plate option, we will be going to pay-by-plate in January of 2023. Upon conversion to all-electronic tolling, including pay-by-plate, cash payments of exact change with coins at that plazas today that are accepted today will no longer be accepted. So you may play, you may pay with either the EZ Pass, the mobile app, or the pay-by-plate option. And again, to process pay-by-plate option of payments, the airports authority will use the existing vehicle identification system to take a picture of your license plate, set up a virtual account, and then bill you once every month for all the transactions that you took during that month. And as a result, though, the airports authority will incur cost to process these transactions, and there will be $1.60 fee added to every transaction during the course of the month. John Aspira will take over from here and explain the process associated with the regulatory changes associated with the pay-by-plate system moving forward.
Thank you, Richard. My name is John Aspara, and I am the Senior Vice President and General Counsel for the Airports Authority. And I'm going to provide some information about the proposed amendment to the Airports Authority regulations to permit the collection of the pay-by-plate fee. Next, please. So first of all, collection of this fee is permitted by law. Under Section 46.2-819.3:1 of the Virginia Code, toll road operators, including the airports authority, may collect an administrative fee to recover the direct costs that are associated with pay-by-plate transactions. So because this fee is to recover costs, it is not intended to generate net revenue for the airports authority. By law, this fee may not exceed double the amount of the base toll. And as you just heard from Richard, the initial administrative fee is set at $1.60. Next, please. So with respect to the proposed amendment to the Airports Authority regulations, we are looking to add a new subsection 2 to Section 10.3 to authorize the imposition of this administrative fee to recover the costs that are associated with the pay-by-plate transactions. The amendment requires that we post signs at Dulles Toll Road entry points to inform drivers that there is an administrative fee should they choose to use pay-by-plate as a payment option, and this is required by the code. And the signs must be situated to enable drivers to take an alternative route to avoid the fee. It's important to note that this amendment will have no effect on the toll rate or the amount of penalties for a toll violation. It is a fee for utilizing the pay-by-plate system in order to pay a toll. Next, please. So here is the proposed text of the amendment. It is a red line of our existing Section 10.3. We're adding the new subsection 2, and I will read it to you. "In addition to the toll set forth in Section 10.1, persons using the Dulles Toll Road without an active functioning automatic vehicle identification device in use at the time of travel may be charged a fee to recover the costs for pay-by-plate collection of the toll. This fee may not exceed double the amount of the base toll unless otherwise permitted by by Section 32.1-819.3:1 of the Code of Virginia. The authority will post signs informing drivers of this fee at locations where the driver may choose to not pay the fee by avoiding use of the Dulles Toll Road." Next, please. And our next steps in the Airports Authority regulatory amendment process are that we will be completing the public hearings tonight and the hearing that is scheduled for next week in person, and completing the public comment period. And after that, staff will report to the Dulles Corridor and Finance Committees of the Airports Authority Board of Directors and report on all comments that were received during the 30-day public comment period, and will propose a recommended action on the proposed amendment. Staff will also provide a report to the Dulles Corridor Advisory Committee on all of the comments that were received during the public comment period, and this will happen in the fall. Lastly, the board committees of the Airports Authority will present their recommendation to the Board of Directors for final action. Next, please. Thank you, and now I'll turn it back to our moderator, Cherie Gibson.
Thank you, John. So wanted to remind attendees that these slides that are on the screen and FAQ and other information cited throughout this presentation will be available online at our website. There's a whole webpage devoted to this with this information. We are inviting public comments on these items between July 11th and August 12th. Comments may be submitted on the website that I just talked about at the in-person public hearing, which will be on July 18th. And we are also accepting comments via an email, dtrcomments2022@hntb.com, or if you'd like to email, I mean snail mail, regular mail, US mail, your comments, you may do so to MLawPublicComment@HNTB@2900SouthQuincyStreetSweep600ArlingtonVirginia22206. In order for your comments to be included in the record, we ask that you utilize one of these methods to submit your comment. Next slide. Okay, so we're going to move into the next section of our agenda. Now, we're going to talk about a proposed amendment to regulations that, beginning January 1, 2023, would increase the toll rates for the use of the Dulles Toll Road. For this portion of our presentation, we have four speakers who will talk about the various subjects, as you see here on the screen. And we will start by asking John Aspira to return to us to talk about the toll rate setting process. Johnna? Oh, just a reminder again that attendees are in listen and view mode only. The virtual hearing is being recorded. We're asking you to put your questions in the QA function during any time of the hearing, and they will be reviewed and posted on the website. Those that can be answered quickly this evening will be as well. The recording of our hearing and responses to questions will be posted at our website, dullestollroad.com/tollsettingprocess. Next.
Thanks, Cherie.
Thank you.
So once again, I'm John Aspara, and I am the Senior Vice President and General Counsel for the Authority. So I am going to begin tonight's public presentation on the Dulles Toll Road rate-setting process by reviewing the Airports Authority's responsibilities under our Permanent Operating Agreement for the Toll Road, talking about the regulatory process itself, the planned toll rate increase, and topics on which we would like public input, and then going over the next steps in the process. Next slide, please. So when the Airports Authority took over operation of the Dulles Toll Road, we entered into a permit and operating agreement with the Commonwealth of Virginia. And under this agreement, among other things, some of our responsibilities are forced to operate, maintain, and improve the toll road for a 50-year term through 2058. We are required to segregate toll revenues from other airports authority revenues from our aviation enterprise. We will design, build, and participate in financing the Metro Rail project, the Silver Line. We will design, build, and finance other capital improvements to the Dulles Corridor with VDOT and Regional Transportation Plan approval. And in order to generate the required revenue to meet the responsibilities that are set forth above, we will set toll rates after public consultation and consultation with the Dulles Corridor Advisory Committee, which is an eight-member committee comprised of two members from Fairfax County, Loudoun County, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the Airports Authority. Next slide, please. So to give you an idea about the regulatory process, pursuant to the Permit and Operating Agreement, the Authority has the exclusive right to establish, charge, and collect tolls and other fees for the use of the Dulles Toll Road. The toll rates must be increased periodically to generate sufficient toll revenue to operate and maintain the toll road, to pay debt service obligations, and to comply with our bond rate covenants. A projected toll rate schedule was initially made public back in 2009, when the first Dulles Toll Road revenue bonds were issued, and that schedule has not changed since 2014. The next projected toll rate increase per that schedule, which we are presenting tonight, is scheduled for January 1, 2023. Next slide, please. This shows you the text of the proposed amendment to Section 10.1 of the Airports Authority regulations. So as you can see, the dollar figures in blue that are in the bold blue font indicate the new toll rates. So, for example, the current toll for a two-axle vehicle is going from $3.25 at the Main Line Plaza to $4, and the ramp toll for a two-axle vehicle is going from $1.50 to $2, and so on for three, four, five, and six or more axle vehicles. Next slide, please. "In addition to the proposed regulatory amendment regarding the toll increase, during this regulatory process, we are inviting the public to comment on the following two topics. First, related to environmental sustainability initiatives. Converting to all-electronic toll collection on the Dulles Toll Road will reduce harmful emissions from vehicles idling at toll plazas. Are there other potential environmental initiatives related to the operation or maintenance of the toll road that should be explored? And secondly, related to customer incentives. Would offering toll credits or other financial incentives be an effective way to encourage Dulles Toll Road customers to carpool or to travel during off-peak hours? And once again, we invite your public input on these two topics via the various ways that you can provide comments." Next slide, please. So the next steps in the regulatory amendment process for this amendment to Section 10.1 are that staff will report back to the Dulles Corridor and Finance Committees of the Airports Authority Board of Directors on all of the comments we will receive during the public comment period, and will propose a recommended action on the proposed amendment to the regulations. Staff will also report to the Dulles Corridor Advisory Committee on all the comments that were received during the public comment period, and this report to that committee will be made in September of this year. And the board committees will then present their recommendation to the Board of Directors for final action. Next slide. I'll now turn it over to Jim Taylor, who will continue the presentation.
Actually, it's Rich. Good evening again. This is Richard Galanaski, the Vice President and Airport Manager at Dulles Airport. I'd like to take a few minutes to highlight some of the work we do on a day-to-day basis to ensure the Dulles Toll Road operates efficiently for the benefit of all the users. I'll talk about the highlights with how the road is set up, including ramp locations. I'll talk about some of the investments we've made in the Dulles Corridor and some of the projects we plan to do in the coming years. And then I'll highlight some of the great work that's been done by our Safety Service Patrol. Next, please. As I mentioned, the DTR is 112-lane mile highway connecting the Capitol Beltway with Loudoun County. We're responsible for the entire Dulles Corridor, which includes the Dulles Toll Road and the airport access highway. However, the focus of my next few slides is strictly on the work we're going to be doing on the Dulles Toll Road. Next, please. Operating a toll road requires constant maintenance and capital projects to keep the traffic flowing. Our capital improvement plan for the next several years includes over $100 million worth of projects between 2022 and 2026. Some of these projects include erosion and drainage repairs, especially at the Rust and Parkway interchange, pavement and rehabilitation repairs throughout the whole length of the highway, bridge rehab and sound wall repairs, again, throughout the whole length of the highway, and upgrading our toll collection system to make sure that our readers are in compliance with the TRIP protocol requirements set out by tolling agencies across the country. By using the TRIP protocol compliance standard, our readers or our EZ Pass transponders will be able to be read throughout any toll system that uses an EZ Pass system. Next, please. I also want to, and finally, I also wish to take a minute to mention the great work that our Safety Service Patrol accomplishes daily for the benefit of the users. You may not know this, but we have several trucks manned 24/7 that drive up and down the highway, helping our passengers. The team responds to hundreds of disabled vehicles with things like flat tires or engine problems. Sometimes it's things like debris in the roadway or animals that have been struck by vehicles. This team also works with local police departments and the fire rescue departments for accidents on the road to ensure the safety of the responders, as well as the safety of the users that are driving around the accident scenes. All told, in 2021, the team had over 3,400 assists on the DTR, making the Dulles Toll Road one of the safest highways in the state of Virginia. This is definitely a record that I am very proud of for all the people that work on the toll road. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Jim Taylor to talk about the next steps.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Jim Taylor. I'm the Financial Advisor for the Airports Authority's Dulles Corridor Enterprise. I'm going to talk a little bit about the finance plan for the Dulles Corridor Metro Rail project. Before I get into the topics, I just want to underscore that the maintenance and operation of the toll road is the top priority. The financial structure is set up to ensure that O and M expenses are paid first, and we have specific reserves to make sure that the road is maintained in the highest quality and that we do everything we can to provide a safe, reliable ride. In addition to maintaining the toll road, we have the responsibility for financing a significant portion of the Dulles Corridor Metro Rail project. I'm going to talk about how those costs are allocated, go through the prior toll increases, talk about what drives the future increases, and then provide some context on the current proposed toll rate increase. It's important to note that in five or six slides, I can't cover the entire finance plan, but I do encourage people who want more information to go to the Airports Authority's website. The Airports Authority has been recognized for the quality of its financial reporting, and you can find audited financial statements, copies of every offering document for every toll road revenue transaction. Anything that you might need should already be on the website. Today, I'm going to highlight things that are most relevant to the proposed toll increase. Next slide. This chart has a lot of numbers. What we want to focus on is the various funding partners for the Metro Rail project. Highlighted in yellow on the far right hand are the contributions from the federal government and the state government. Those are fixed amounts, grants that were sought after and approved and received, and they total approximately 26.8% of the $5.76 billion budget. The rows highlighted with the blue percentages show the shares that are covered by the local funding partners, Fairfax County, Loudoun County, and the Airports Authority's Aviation Enterprise. They will cover 25% of the total cost, and that's about $1.4 billion. The residual cost is covered by the proceeds of revenue bonds that are secured by Dulles Toll Road revenues. That totals about $2.792 billion, the number in green on the bottom right, which is about 48.5% of the total. This allocation is pursuant to funding agreements among the partners that were set up at the beginning of the financing plan. Part of the, one of the provisions in those financing agreements was that the partners would continue to pursue funding, and if funding was obtained, it would reduce the amount allocated to the toll road. You can see that in the second to last column. We got about $71 million of additional funds. Those are shown as positive numbers, and that reduced not only the local share, but about $53 million of the share allocated to the toll road. So the financing plan was set up to reduce, if possible, the amount allocated to toll road customers. Next slide. The policy to devote toll revenue in the Dulles Corridor to transit was established by the Commonwealth of Virginia, which built and operated the toll road in the 80s and 90s. In the late 90s, they began increasing the amount of Dulles Toll Road revenue that went to transit service in the corridor. And it was the Commonwealth of Virginia that enacted the first toll increase in 2005 to generate funds for the Metro Rail project. The Airports Authority proposed to take over the financing of the Metro Rail and the construction. The airports authority proposed to take over the financing of the Metro Rail and the construction. In order to ensure that Dulles Toll Road revenues remained in the corridor. After assuming responsibility in two thousand eight, there were no increases until two thousand ten. At that point, a series of annual toll increases were implemented. Uh, the airports authority was able to secure additional state funding in twenty thirteen. And a significant federal loan in twenty fourteen, and that enabled toll rates to be held constant for about five years. Four years. Um, the last toll increase was enacted in January one, twenty nineteen. Uh, and, uh, the intention is to, um, continue to do periodic toll increases as necessary to cover the debt service. Next slide. This chart shows the debt service, the annual debt service requirement on debt that was issued. To finance the Dulles, the toll road share of the Dulles Corridor Metro Rail project. Uh, the debt has been structured to, uh, increase, uh, gradually over the next, um, uh, ten years or so. So that we maintain the value of the toll road, the time savings, the convenience, the reliability. Uh, relative to the toll that is paid for a typical, uh, trip. Uh, there were several refinancings in, in recent years, and so after twenty twenty three. We were able to achieve relatively flat debt service, which reduces, which may reduce or eliminate the need. For toll increases, uh, after that point. Next slide. Uh, one of the things that has been important to the airports authority and the funding partner since the beginning is transparency. We've always published what the anticipated toll rate increases would be. This is the current schedule and it has been in place since twenty fourteen. Um, a toll increase in twenty twenty three, similar increase in twenty twenty eight. Uh, dollar fifty toll increase to the average trip cost in twenty twenty three. And then, as I mentioned before, based upon the success we had restructuring the debt. The potential planned increases in twenty thirty eight, twenty forty three and twenty forty eight may not be necessary. Uh, but again, in the interest of transparency, we are showing the possibility. Next slide. Um, we get questions about how the toll road has fared during the pandemic. This chart is a summary of transactions. That's the heavy line at the top. And toll revenue, gross toll revenue, those are the columns. You can see from the line that there was a significant dip between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty in terms of transactions. Uh, we have done extensive analysis over the past year with consultants with expertise in traffic and revenue studies. And they, um, uh, feel it is prudent to base our plan, plan, finance plan. On the assumption that work from home will continue to be a significant factor in this area. And so the finance plan does not assume, uh, a quick recovery in terms of the number of transactions. Uh, there was a significant reduction in toll revenue. Uh, but the airports authority through a number of actions, um, eliminating the cost of cash toll collection. Uh, restructuring debt, uh, strategic use of reserves. Was able to keep with the planned toll rate increase schedule. Uh, we did not accelerate the twenty twenty three increase and we did not increase the amount, uh, that had always been planned. And so through, uh, prudent management of the debt side and financial side. Uh, we are anticipating that the twenty twenty three toll increase will be sufficient to meet our obligations. And that there will not need to be another toll increase until twenty twenty eight. The slight growth that you see in twenty twenty three to twenty seven reflects, uh, recovery of traffic and growth in the service area. In terms of transactions, uh, but not additional toll increases. Uh, after the significant analysis of projected toll revenue, we did our analysis in terms of what. Um, uh, whether the planned toll increase is necessary and sufficient. We could go to the next slide. Uh, this is a summary of that analysis. What you see in the green line at the top. Is the projected net toll revenue. That's the gross toll revenue we showed on the prior slide. We took out estimated operation and maintenance expenses. That's the green line. And then we compare that to, uh, the minimum net revenue that's required. To meet our obligations to investors and to maintain our credit ratings. The difference between the green line and the bars, the columns, anything that's not used to pay operating and maintenance expenses. Or debt service is used to pay the capital improvements and renewal and replacement expenses in the toll road. All revenue stays in the quarter and all of it is used, um, to maintain both the experience of the customers and to pay our obligations. One more slide, if we could go to the next one. This just shows if the toll increase is not approved in twenty twenty three. Uh, we are projected not to satisfy our financial requirements and the airports authority board is obligated to, um. Uh, consider another toll increase or take other actions to come back into compliance. Uh, with its covenants with the bondholders. Again, this is intended to be a highlight of the aspects, the financial plan that are relevant to the proposed toll increase. Much more information is available on the airports authority website, uh, under financial information. Talked about how the Dulles Corridor Metro Rail project, the toll road share has been financed. Now going to turn it over so you can get an update on the status of construction. Mr. Haskell?
Great, thank you, Jim, and I'm Drew Haskell. I'm the Senior Vice President for the Dulles Corridor Metro Rail Project. And I'll be giving an update of the status of the project. Next slide, please. Uh, recently, we had the declaration of operational readiness for, uh, the Dulles, uh, for the Silver Line Phase Two extension. Uh, you'll remember that the construction of the Dulles Metro Rail project was implemented in two phases. Phase one was completed and turned over to the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority or WAMADA in two thousand fourteen. WAMADA declared on, on June twenty third of this year. That the second phase of the Dulles Corridor Metro Rail project had reached operational readiness. So what does that mean? Well, it means the entire project is now under Metro's control. The train and the transit authority will conduct extensive testing, inspections, monitoring and training needed. For the six new silver line stations to open to the public. The exact opening date hasn't been decided yet. However, Metro anticipates that the new silver line stations will open during the fall of twenty twenty two. Next slide, please. And, and these slides are just an overview of the Silver Line project. Um, phase one certainly started at, um. Uh, West Falls Church and extended out, um. Out through Wheelie Avenue and the second phase of Dulles Port of the project, uh, includes six new stations. Um, starting at Reston Town Center, uh, extending out through Ashburn and including one station at Dulles International Airport. Next slide, please. In addition to the six stations and the eleven and a half miles of rail, uh, the project also included construction of a ninety acre rail yard. Uh, this rail yard is the largest facility in the WAMADA system, uh, with the storage capacity of a hundred and sixty eight rail cars. And maintenance facilities to service, inspect and clean WAMADA's trains. Next slide, please. And I'll turn this back over to Sri to wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. So, um, these are a few reminders. The presentation portion of our hearing has ended. Uh, you can continue to submit questions. We are starting to review those now. Um, and to the extent that we can answer them, we will, um, if other, other questions require review. We will, um, be posting them on the website. A reminder that we are recording tonight's presentation. Uh, the recording plus copies of tonight's presentation and the responses to the questions will be posted. At the authorities website for this effort, which is WWW Dulles Toll Road dot com toll setting process. And I also placed this link in, uh, the chat so that you could, um, have it handy. The public comment period for the proposed toll rate increases will run from July eleventh through August tenth, twenty twenty two. Comments are invited via the website or at our in-person public hearing on July eighteenth. Or via email, DTRcommentstwentytwentytwo@hntv.com. You may also mail them, uh. U S mail to M Y Public Comment Period, care of H and T B, twenty nine hundred South Quincy Street, Suite six hundred. Arlington, Virginia, two 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 oh six. So at this point, I believe we're reviewing questions.
Uh, yes, I just want to ensure the people that, um, even though you may not see the other attendees. There are other attendees here submitting questions. Most of these, I think, uh, we need to, um. Think about and craft the response. And so if your question is not answered tonight, this does not mean we didn't get it. Uh, we'll just provide a response and maybe links to additional information. Uh, some people are submitting statements and comments. As Sri said, uh, we really encourage you to also submit those comments. Through the other means so that they can be officially part of the record. So continue to submit questions. Uh, we just may not respond to them tonight.
So, uh, the first question, so what about people from outside the area like out of state? Uh, the answer to that is the pay by plate system will work on any registered vehicle in the U S. Next question is, am I the only attendee tonight? And the, the response is this is a webinar format so that only the panelists were shown. Um, all the attendees, there are, uh, several attendees, so you are not the only one in the webinar. Uh, the next question, uh, is a series of questions. Um. Thanks for the presentation. Question probably for Jana or Jim per the lease agreement between M Y and the Commonwealth. Um, is that the DTR permit and operating agreement, is there a date in there when the road reverts back to the Commonwealth? I'd note the Silver Line, the funding of which the main re, was the main reason for the agreement is soon to be handed over to WAMADA. But there may not be, there may or may not be a factor, that may not, may or may not be a factor. After all, it is strange for an airports authority to manage a toll road. Thanks again. Uh, and the response to that is the DTR, the Dulles Toll Road permit and operating agreement term expires in twenty fifty eight. Next, can we still pay tolls with coins? Uh, the answer to that question is exact toll collection, uh, exact change toll collection will be eliminated on January first, twenty twenty three. Uh, the next one we have here is, um, as you move towards electronic tolling. I ask that you consider mounting the tolling devices on overhead gantries spread along the travel lanes instead of at the ramps. And the main toll plaza. This method used on most modern toll roads. Allow for the charging of tolls for the exact miles of vehicle. A vehicle travels instead of charging big hits at smaller number of places. Um, and this was submitted by Sean Reagan, Herndon Council Member. So the response to this is thank you for the comment. Our large, long range plan is to remove the plazas and use gantries at all ramps. Uh, next we have, did I hear correctly that there will be a clearer approach to signs regarding access to the toll road? Uh, signs are being reviewed and will be revised prior to January twenty twenty three. So next question is a bit of a clarification of the earlier comments submitted by the council member. I appreciate the plan and it is a step, but what I am specifically asking about is moving the tolling to the travel lane. So that vehicles are charged for each mile of travel and only for the miles that they travel. As most modern toll roads operate this way, it is at least worth studying as one of several options. Um, and again, we thank you for that clarification. M Y will consider the feasibility of other options such as distance based tolling. Um, our next answered question is, does WAMADA plan to install an electronic detector and plate reader? On the off bound ramp transitioning from eastbound Highway two sixty seven to northbound Highway seven. The response, uh, this area was never told due to the proximity to the main toll plaza. And then the, uh, uh, final question that has been answered thus far. Does the, um, does WAMADA operate any authority over the Greenway Toll Road that runs from the end of the Dulles Toll Road to Leefburg? And, uh, the answer to that is the Greenway is owned and operated by a separate entity. Those are the nine, uh, that we have been able to answer so far. We will remain, uh, on the webinar through eight thirty if there are other questions that, uh, any attendee wants to pose. We are nearing the end of our allotted time for tonight's hearing. Uh, we are continuing to accept questions and we'll be reviewing them this week to provide answers to those that weren't, um, addressed. And again, apologize for the, the slight technical, uh, issues we had with the questions, but do be assured that we have all of the questions. That have been submitted and we'll be addressing them. And we want to thank our panelists tonight for joining us and we want to thank, um, all of you, uh, attendees who have come in, um, to participate. Uh, just a reminder of the, uh, options and ways for you to submit official comment. And please visit WWW Dulles Toll Road dot com toll setting process, uh, to submit your comments through August tenth. And with that, we will, um, say goodnight.